Well, due to the flooding, Paul is not going to be here. Did say, um, well, they've had a pretty tough week, you know, to keep, he took any time off and he had so many guys out working extra. We had a number of roads that we had to fix. There were one. Yeah, but that is one that's fixed now. Um, and the way he did that, I guess, Scott probably knows better than I, but he used some fabric, right? How, how did he do that?
I pulled it back together. The man just came and come apart in there and they pulled it back together and then it laid up. Mighty over, so at least the stuff goes over instead of cutting in, but it's gonna have to be dug up and redone, but this is just temporary.
So he, is the culvert must be right here to do the truck?
And then, the one that I called young, the mincer one, it washed out again, but as of today, they went up and fixed it too, put some matting in it, and it's, uh, was holding this morning, watered right up to it, but it's, it's holding this morning, so. It didn't really, down my house, come up about the old man's, so I never, it went down about ten o'clock last night and it hasn't came back up, you know, to where it was. I think it's pushing the water and every little ditch and everything's plump, so, I think it's just an hour, a lot too when some of it's up, it's just, you know, you fight and fight and tell, I think dumping dirt and stuff in there, you know, we got, them people got their stuff moved, so. But the south side of the highway, or the north side of the highway, it's all good. Then I haven't got no water coming out of that monkey dogs or coming out of that, but that's all, that's all good.
Does that yet to cover your finger, or is it not?
I don't think we're gonna get enough, not if you like what you're doing, it's hard. We did that twice this morning.
We, uh, had water through like several places, but more than I've, now, looked at it, you know, the culverts are, they're full, I mean, they're full, they're full degree, they're running full till, and the water's still moving, so, so, so we put signs up and, uh, Paul's gonna move around, you know, you just need somebody in the middle of the night to get, get there and hit water like that, you know, and you can't see the end of the road. Um, there's one, uh, big nails, but Scott, I think that's just gonna be a continual problem.
Well, the blade is low enough in there, the road blade is low enough, you gotta build the road up more by D, 'cause it kinda comes in there and it drops down and it comes back up, you should bring it up to there, eh?
Yeah. I talked to, to, uh, Radke, and we're dumping a lot of water of, uh, Willbrook, and that isn't that working, Will? Isn't it forgotten? So that's part of the issue is not just snow, there's a huge dump of water, too. He figures Willbrook could fill up three times as I go there.
They said seventy-two percent right now is what the, that Willbrook is. What's East Fork culvert?
I was gonna say, it's the best I've ever seen it. They did a, like, a, wing in that, and it was a slow melt off, the ditch opened up, and not to water, you know, normally it'll come down, and that ditch is full of snow in the same front of the road. There you go.
So, so it's cold down the side of the road?
Down, down the ditch and cold, I mean, I've never seen it that way.
Some of our culverts are plugged up like that one on Saturday, with the Saturday in the corner, whatever. Anyway, that was just ranchers' principles got stuck in it, gone down and wet, and the ice got, and that's what washed it out, but, uh...
The two worst spots on East Fork is, uh, no, three worst spots, there's three places that we need culverts, and so we need culverts, and always falls across, it's only, right across, but it does it every year.
But you could tell Paul where there are the signs. Yeah, there are several places we're gonna need to, uh, culvert.
Again, he was looking into seeing about getting a purchase on culverts, and I said, well, wait till we see what we're gonna actually need, and talk to you and, you know.
He's making, making notes?
Just if we purchase, we can get abundant, you know, and it's cheaper.
I talked to Rick Day, and he asked that I relay this on to any commissioner or, uh, guys that could call out. Paul's gotta keep track of all those hours and what they use, because there's a threshold we have to hit if we declare an emergency, and when we hit that threshold, we can access a fund that's, we already have money in the fund, so we don't really need to ask to stay for it once it exceeds the fund. I don't know, is there Mike twenty-five, twenty-seven thousand or something like that? You told me that.
I s-
Two mil. Totally?
Two mils.
Two bills, right.
I drove up that block by road to see what it was doing, and I see some of that where they laid that chips and that's breaking up, you know, I don't know if it's, what's going on there, yeah.
Is it?
And then that water was pushing there, but it looks like, I don't know, they were hauling out of there, what could be, uh, a little part of frost, whatever. Yeah, this looks like the edge of the road, they're getting too close too, bringing, starting the big chunks coming out. For the pot hole thing, I think the worst one is in the lower valley right now, is the ones next to the Ojo grounds.
Yeah.
They built them, they're already bade out, and it's-
That road, you know, coming from my place past Malheath, it washed completely out, but Paul had a contractor run up with one loader. He was hauling for, where was he hauling, where else was he hauling?
He was hauling for two other people, I don't know their names.
But I had, uh, had really good comments, I mean, everybody knows it's a mandate, right? But they were, thanks a lot for at least, you know, doing what you did, and then he put the loader up there and made up a burn, so that it would stay kind of, but it's coming out of these fields, where it's getting washed out this morning and this tomorrow. So, you know, I think they're doing the best they can, they're, they're doing it.
Got a lot to know with them, yeah.
I have a question.
Yes.
Your mind. Since Paul Outt isn't here, um, I was just wondering, why isn't there a written report? So, when he has emergencies or whatever he's doing now, at least there's a written report.
Probably a good idea, I, you know, he hasn't, the answer is he hasn't had time. He absolutely has been running from get to go. He was, was a little hitting a cone yesterday, he, uh, he, he hasn't stopped. He asked us to get it in, you know, in the minutes, so.
Well, he never does.
Their question-
Even when, um-
Okay, no, you had a question, it's over, there'll be comments until the clock, but question is-
But there, I, there's, no, excuse me, excuse me for the record, I'm talking about this, the road report from Paul Outt.
Yeah.
And this has to do with that, that why isn't there a written, and you said he's busy now, but we've never had a written report from him.
Well, okay.
Okay.
Question's loaded.
And then last week, he was on the agenda and he didn't show up.
He was at a convention, a training, and he was gone. That was noted in two minutes.
Well, see, I don't have the minutes because they haven't been approved.
So further discussion regarding roads, anybody?
Well, I mentioned on the East Fork, uh, it's been a tough situation, because, you know, it's just rough.
Yeah.
And, and as soon as it dries out, we go out there and play it, and if you look at the weather report, we're just talking about this for a while. Anyway, do you, I don't know if you read that, but we played it, probably did a real nice job playing, you know, a week later, it's the same shape, basically. So, I mean, I think we may coordinate a little bit on the weather.
Sure.
It's a place, but maybe just skim it first time, you know, just to, just to get rid of the worst.
You think there's any chance of putting a little better binder in there? Cause I'm, I'm with you on that, I just noticed it seems like they, yeah, then they, the so much traffic, man, don't-
Well, the East Fork, terminal, it's all like, you know, all the, all the rock, um, we gotta talk about that, you know, the state, or whatever.
Yeah, East Fork. We got that pit, you know, that we got from the state, right at the bottom, right, that, uh, which lake right there, that could be a source.
So that's all through?
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
We just backed out of it, cause they wanted so much to take a ring in, to start breaking all that, it's cheaper to buy it from the locals and most of it gets set up and they're crushing it up each other.
We were thinking maybe what we could do is, uh, get a crusher in and, uh, you know, partner up with some other, other folks like Rock Creek, managing some other people who needed rock, and have him do a bunch of rock there, and we could sell rock to the locals. I mean, it's a thought, but that's, that's a good source, you know?
Just that, boy, the prices have doubled on the crushers, so it's a little cheaper to get from Phillip and Mazur, or whatever, yeah.
Well, we're getting another base course, you know, sort of thing. Yeah, we'll get there, gotta work on that, it's just, you know, just coordination, I mean, a lot of years.
So what kind of information would we need as far as, you know, we could put it on the agenda and, uh, and have discussion, but I'm sure there'd be a bunch of like, you know, send out with Paul maybe and have him get the information, and have the discussion, I think so. I mean, how many miles it is, and how much it would take, and measure it maybe, and then, uh, sort of, you know, if you think we need an engineer come, we got to do that too, whatever.
I'd like to, 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 to respect that.
That's really well. They beat that off real bad, you know, they hauled it up, and they stayed cold, and I'm like you, they had that, um, they had that private guy going, and he scraped all over the gravel on it, and laid.
Yeah.
And we had to go out there and try to-
The force was still up.
We had to go back out there and try to pull it back on, you know what it is, and you got them big clumps of shit down there before, yeah, they cleaned every bit of it off.
That's exactly what, you know, you got fourteen days of one crew, fire crew, and we put seventy-two thousand dollars on the ground on that, had, you know, for those guys, because they're pounding a whole lot, they, the force was paid for. And so fourteen days later, or twenty-eight days later, here comes another crew, right, doesn't know anything that we did, and there's a private guy who pushes it all in the ditch.
Wind rolled it, wind rolled it off, just from one side.
Yeah, no.
Took it home.
And that's what we're doing in theory, you know?
She has coffee, this little-
Yeah, we made it very clear they'll never do that again. I mean, we were a team, but that's what happened.
Yeah, like with Georgetown, they should look.
Uh, it's, it's true.
Or anything.
Yeah, I think what's, especially if you look, you keep the iron, you know, you're looking at something that I can, uh, actually, like I said, you'll make them hit the right amount of, like, you know, the last couple, three years, it seems like they did it a week later, you know, yeah, so maybe they hit it.
I'm very brave, you know, it's really, it's tough. Yeah, I admit that, like I say, that, maybe we just wanna skim it first time and not, you know, not, not put a lot of work into it.
I mean, your call, you know, you can look at it, see what you think, and, I mean, that's the best bet.
I think Paul's willing to look at it anyway, as far as that.
He literally writes down in a little book every day where he goes, like, we need a little copy to, you know, to stop, but he does write in his book every day.
Well, basically, if he's here, he reports out of his book, which gives him the minutes, which is, you know, I'd rather have Paul supervising people, you know, managing the equipment and all these things he needs to do, continually, you know, write reports. I mean, he's a working foreman, and that's what he does. You know, I, I think he needs to keep meticulous notes, that's why he's got a laptop in his vehicle, he's got, uh, he's connected to the sheriff's department and everything, he's got all the tools he needs, so, boy. And then I think, you always have a pretty significant road report in your minutes, don't you, Mike? Yeah.
Well, maybe he could call in, help you.
Yeah, he, he can, and do you want, do you want to try to call him, see if he's-
He was headed up Rock Creek, so you won't get him now.
Oh, okay.
He was at Calvin, uh, some person called, uh, oh, I can't think, Brown's called, or something about up there, from the rocks or something, so he was going up there before he sent a truck up there, and a lot of times we put him up there and it just, hand, pit, so, there was a great big rock out here in the middle of the road up here, and the scalp, where you turn to go down to Rock Creek Brands, right where that bridge, but somebody pushed it off, so, he died, it was already pushed off, I think the state that came to help us out, you know, but I guess it was a great big rock on that face, and, yeah, right, I don't think, you might just be on the phone, but I just, I know he was headed to Rock Creek, look at that rooster.
I had my phone on all day yesterday, I know they're calling.
Yeah.
I should've called you, I should've just called you.
You're gonna call me. Other than that, though, it's, just gonna be, uh...
Hey, you're on speak, you're on speaker with all of us, we wanted to know if you had anything to add to your report.
Hold on one second, please.
Good.
Yeah.
Hey, Paul, you're on speaker with, uh, the commission, we just wanted to know if you had, uh, any further additions to your report, I think we got everything in there that we, that you told us is.
Uh-huh, I think so.
Okay, so, uh, anything to add on the flooding or what you're doing here?
Um, right now, we're just trying to get this damn smart washout field down.
Oh, okay.
And we'll have, uh, we're just putting a bunch of rock and stuff, and we'll have it done today, but, um, and the one up by Calvin's is still holding.
Good.
I pass that on, I pass that on already, Paul, do a better.
Oh, okay.
So, Commissioner Hinkle, do you have any questions for Paul?
No.
Okay. Hey, you guys are doing a good job, make sure you tell your guys, we appreciate their extra efforts.
You can check out the East Fork Road, it's pretty good, it's really good, compared to other areas, but, uh, it's kinda rough, but it's running across from other couple places, three places.
All right. I'll be up there later today.
Thanks, Paul.
Yeah, thank you.
Have a good day. That kinda gives you an idea of what he's up to. Yeah, so, uh, this the time set for Georgetown Lake overflow review and decision, you guys have got the data, uh, it went up a lot, huh?
Yeah, I'm gonna make a motion to, I appreciate it.
On that, uh, I had a call from, uh, Jason Vitor and Sam Dennis, and they were hoping we jumped it up to forty.
Forty?
Forty or a little bit more, and I see the fishing game, they're worried about the fish, but I can, is it max forty-one or something? No, he put forty-eight.
You can put that, but it runs, I don't know where it-
Forty-eight?
Forty-eight, it'll run.
But, uh, this, uh, they were thinking that if a guy let more out now and just manage it like we've been doing over the years, and then they won't get the big, but ice kinda green wasn't good right now, we're getting, so if we moved up to at least forty or forty-one there.
Um, so you wanna modify your motion?
I'll modify it to forty.
To forty?
I mean, we gotta start, but, no, no.
Okay.
Well, I think now, now we can handle it too, so.
So, not that I don't, I'm not disagreeing, but I, I think it's, we should note for the minutes that the fishing game sent us a letter and said they wanted us to manage it, where, where it's at, for fish kill and the, uh, the, I think the public safety of out, outweighs that, because in fact, when it gets to the, um, overflow, we're eleven inches away going over the flood, we lose total control of that, at least we control it now somewhat.
The thing about it, I mean, it's on, I know what you're saying there, but the fish kill happened last year too, it's just, we gotta, I mean, there's people's lives survive on this water.
I'm just acknowledging the letter from the fishing game, the other issue is, come on up, Flint Creek clearly is two feet over at the banks.
I wish that, uh, Brad Leirman, instead of going through Wayne, I wish he'd come in here and talk to us, I mean, we're getting this through email, man, I wish he'd come in and sit down and really sway us, you know, cause then we, that means a meeting too, and-
What do you think forty would do to it?
Well, it's gonna, by the time it gets down there, it'll take three days.
Well, then finally get to-
But, yeah, but I mean, it's, it's, I think we're better off right now than if we hold it, we're, it's gonna come over.
So then we don't have any control.
And then we're gonna have to do plus the, so, I mean, we'll be dumping, I understand, I think-
Yeah, I, I just think it's important to understand that, you know, Flint Creek right now, well, at my house, it's outside, it's not a problem, because that's all pasture land that gets flooded, you know, anyway, I mean, but I don't know if there are any other issues, um, you know, that we're gonna add, what, twenty CFS to that, that's a lot, you know? What do you think, Scott? You've done this before, Scott, you've put some-
I think we'll be all right, I mean, it's gonna, we're at that point.
We're not.
It's gonna happen anyway, but I just, I think if we ma, start managing more better right now, like we've done over the years, I can read that to you, uh, I think we'll be all right.
You're looking for last year's.
Yeah. See, last year this time, we were below four, what, sixteen fifty-six, and we were dumping out forty, and what's that, that last one?
Yeah, dumping out forty-six.
So I agree with her, cause I'm, I'm, I'm exactly your notion of forty.
Okay. So Mike, there's a motion to change the outflow of forty CFS, and a second from Fisher Adler. Further discussion on the motion?
Just a note in the notes that Sam Dennis and Jason Vitor talked to me about, seen it, so, they're the ones that kinda deal with this, I mean, they're gonna get it first.
Well, I think we can, we'll know the effects by next week of what it did to Flint Creek, we can always adjust it, okay? And, you know, they are dumping a lot of water out of Willbrook as well, so, that, that effect from, like, haul down, below haul down, it's all.
Yeah.
Um, okay, so, further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And for Sean Harris, Mike, do you have a word?
I don't, I'm not gonna, I don't, I don't, I don't know. I'm able to say, uh, I can, I can. Parrot galls ain't even running yet, they're not even made it to the highway, parrot galls is not even coming.
Snow's not melting up there, huh?
Kinda, kinda, like everything's holding and all of a sudden, boom, yeah, but.
Yeah.
Yeah, Kenny went out Sunday with the blade and hit a couple of minerals and ditched the water off, and he woke up and said, yeah, just, and saved some of that, all that.
Willa Creek get hit? Willa Creek road, you did? Yeah, they're dumping a bunch of water out of Willa Creek.
Michael Nelson was talking this morning, he's, well, we're, right now, if that, if that will, all the workers out there at, uh, Big Knos, that there's no way in or out, cause the other side's closed.
It's not now, but he's, so they have to go back out either way, there's a way out.
Not Big Knos, there's blood out.
Yeah, they go back out past Mary McGomes, like Mason Relane will come back out.
I think, but they got it fixed, they know, don't you?
Yeah, it's fixed.
Oh, they said, no, he said it's not, it wasn't, so.
Oh, you mean, is there another one that's?
One there at Alan Gomez, or Peters or place.
Oh, it's fixed.
Okay.
And it's, and it's old.
Maybe Paul's called the lab and know that it could be, uh, or-
Yeah. Well, we took the sign, took the sign, so, let's see. Course I can change, right?
Yeah.
So, do you guys think this is just a portion, that we should put, uh, Lerner's letter in it, just to put in with the minutes?
I think, I mean, I-
Or minutes? What is it? Lerner, the fish and duck guys?
That'd be, that'd be a good idea, that'd be, uh-
Okay. So, without exception, is that okay?
Yeah.
Mike, could you just, you don't have to re印 it, just put in with the minutes? Does that make sense?
It can be copied and pasted, I just do it.
Yeah, we, uh, we can, like, scan and paste.
Okay, well, yeah, what I meant was, the letters end up in the minutes, so everybody can see it, and we consider it?
Yep.
Okay. I don't want to say we didn't consider it, cause we did. You know, you did catch that, um, that comment from Fisher Adler regarding last year's, uh, data? Okay, so Commissioner Adler, um, looked up last year, at this date, it was sixteen inches below full pool, and we were running forty, forty CFS, and that was part of the consideration of your motion, that last year's data was part of your consideration of your motion, because we're sixteen inch below, and we had forty more last year. We just wanna put the various factors, we consider everything.
For the record, you're starting to get a crowd here with the three of you, I'm addressing the crowd in a little louder voice so that they can hear what you're saying.
Thanks, we'll do that.
Thank you.
They're buying the speakers.
Buying the speaker system.
Oh, really?
We just didn't wanna, we just didn't wanna break the bank door, we didn't have to.
Oh, yeah.
This one, but understand-
Yeah.
Hey, it's good.
What's the next item?
The roads.
Oh. If you're waiting to start, is it possible that the public could get a copy of the, uh, next agenda item?
I'm sure it's in there, did you see, did you go look for, uh?
Well, there are people here, there's enough copies for all of them.
It's up to you.
Well, is that, is it, are the papers out there, is it possible to just pick those up, and is it possible to have the clerk and recorder, uh, make a copy of it?
We could, we could pick them up, pass them out, pull back, and if you want copies, submit copies, and then it's gonna cost your quarter.
Well, how else are we supposed to know what you're talking about?
Okay. That's fine. Would you have them pass them out?
To bring in that.
To bring it in the- Yeah, well, what it is he's talking about is the next agenda item, there's three issues.
Okay. All right, I have a copy here.
Okay, let's just pass it out, and folk, if you want copies, after you see this, um, go into the clerk, and she'll make you copies. Okay, this is the time set for, um- Okay, this is the time set for, um, Cooperative Forest Road Agreement, uh, twenty nineteen, Road Maintenance Plan and Decision. We have three issues that we're gonna cover, uh, Schedule A, uh, the cooperative plan, and the modification of the twenty eighteen road project agreement with the Forest Services. Uh, all three of us will make decisions on them today. We have representatives from the Forest Service, hi guys.
Hello.
Hey. And your name again?
My name's Rick.
Rick. Yep, Bill Slaughter.
Paul Looper.
So guys, we, uh, had a pretty good discussion, uh, last session about this, and we, um, you know, asked a lot of questions, Scott. It put on the agenda for this time for the decision, do you have any opening remarks before we get started?
I think the new agreement that we have, that it was changed, Greg, we've had one that.
Yeah. So the, uh, draft they, uh, sent last week, talked about, uh, two excavators, right? And now it's, uh, that's increased and, uh.
Appropriate.
So Exhibit D. If I can find that.
And this all has to do with the modification of the twenty eighteen, right?
Exactly.
Okay.
This one is the same as the other.
Yeah, we can, I just wanna give a lot of.
Oh, Exhibit A, page one of five, two excavators with operators, potential of having one dozer with operator, addition of equipment to be determined by Forest Service during project implementation.
That was a change.
So basically, uh, could be, could be more than that.
Okay, other opening comments?
I, I'd just say for clarification for everybody in the room, is that there's three different things, three different parts, one is the main master agreement, where we're suggesting a modification to add some more roads to it. The next piece is the annual maintenance plan, the design every year, and then the third piece is the project agreement that's specific to that extra fire.
Is your.
Is that, uh, the project agreement that's specific to the, the extra fire disaster funding network?
They've called that modification of grant or, or agreement.
Modification of master agreement, the annual maintenance plan, and a modification to that.
Right, so, so the cooperative forest agreement, that's the one we do every, all the time.
The cooperative agreement, that term is for the overall master agreement, that lasts five years.
Just a question, is why are we, through the spring of twenty twenty? Why are we, we doing it now if it's, it's fire planning?
You're adding a few more roads to the schedule, to Schedule A, to show that they're eligible to be included in the project. I'm not sure which one is.
Well, let's just take that up, so, let's separate it out, let's take up the Cooperative Forest Agreement, twenty nineteen Road Maintenance Plan, okay? So with that, Chuck, um.
Or Schedule, or Schedule A.
Schedule A.
Schedule A.
Schedule, we'll find out on Schedule A, they added, uh, some roads here to our normal, uh, agreement with the Forest Service.
One is that Carbridge Road.
Where's that?
That's that, uh, road that runs up Meadow Creek. So if anyone would like to trip that all the way around the eastward, Meadow Creek and Carbridge.
Are there dark ones, the ones that you're adding?
Well, the dark ones are when they're putting on the qualification.
Yeah, so, I don't know if we.
Okay, so what we're talking about, just for clarification, is that under this agreement that we've had with the Forest Service for a long time and up until, it's gonna be up to twenty twenty, there are some modifications. Part A is what we're talking about, part A is local road systems on which normal maintenance will be, uh, responsible, be the responsibility of the Forest Service and are shown in the attached map and Exhibit A, so, talking about part A, that's your guys' responsibility, and you add some roads. Got it?
So that part A one where they have the Willow Creek Road as a new one?
Again, I'm not sure what the difference is getting this.
Well, what, I think the part A and the part B you're looking at is part of the road maintenance plan itself, and part A is what the Forest Service normally maintains.
Right.
And part B is what they count.
So I'm actually more interested in part B, because that is, part B, the Forest Service, uh, ba-ba-ba-ba, which normal winter maintenance applying occurs, will be the responsibility of the operator, Granite County, as shown in the attached map, are there any additions to our responsibilities?
No.
I didn't. I wanna be sure. Yeah, so I would entertain a motion to, uh, uh, regarding Cooperative Forest Road Agreement, twenty nineteen Road Maintenance Plan, with a modification to the Forest Service. Is there a motion?
Is there a map? No, somebody has a map.
Well, I mean, we're what is, were there? No, they did.
We didn't have.
Yeah.
I'll make, I'll make the motion on this one, Walker, the Forest Road Agreement, sixteen R O one one zero one zero two zero back zero zero five.
Two thousand and nineteen Road Maintenance Plan.
Yeah, effective through the spring of twenty twenty, so we revisit that spring.
Okay. Is there a second?
I'd still like to know which roads they are.
They're, they're. They're, yeah.
Part of Upper Willow, Carbridge Road, and Viking Lane, right?
Yeah.
I thought that was a modification. Should be, should be, this is just a cooperative.
What they're saying, they'll, no matter what happens to Viking Lane, they're gonna maintain it for this year.
Yeah, for the ma- for the annual maintenance plan itself, there are no changes.
I was talking, I was talking about the, he said they made it to the Schedule A.
No, no, we're, we're still on, I think we're still on Scott, because what we're talking about, maintenance, just maintenance, not any new building.
I know, but it's.
So your, it, your motion was.
Accept.
To accept the maintenance. Through. Is there a second?
Through the spring of twenty twenty, so we'll come back in.
Every year you re- as it that any of those years.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
So. Okay, so there's a motion to accept, uh, uh, road, uh, twenty eighteen Road Maintenance Plan, is there further discussion on the motion? Okay, um, public discussion on the motion, just on the motion.
On the motion up?
On the motion that was just made, did you hear the motion?
Can we discuss it, could it be, if that's part of the motion, right?
Part B you're talking about.
Well, I don't know, it says Exhibit B here.
Yeah, okay, part B, Exhibit B, yes, yes.
Okay, you, you show the, uh, road red as being, uh, the winter road maintenance, and then the, the other side there says the ownership, the Forest Service. When you go all the way to the top there where it, it, uh, comes together, uh, who is, who's responsible for that road that goes from the top of the hill all the way around? The way they're doing it now, they plow to the top of the hill, and that's where all the snow sits, and the road going around there isn't plowed at all.
Which road, Chuck, or?
It's a, well, it's a red, red road, uh.
I know.
Here, it's right up here.
So that's the highway, that's where, right where the dam is?
That's the highway.
The highway, yeah.
Yep.
Well, uh, the, uh.
So who's responsible for the dam?
Maybe, man, I'm just looking at this wrong, uh, uh.
State shoved some of that over there.
Huh?
The State Department of Transportation put some of that there this year.
Okay, so, I, I was looking at it, and I was thinking of the dam, uh.
I'm just.
So did you have a question?
Perspective.
So did you have this question, or where we at?
Well, who's, I guess, really what it gets down to is who's responsible for the road maintenance going from the, uh, uh, all the way around, uh, up the road up there?
Uh, D or T, pardon?
Pardon?
State Department of, if I'm understanding your question, it's the State of Montana Department of Transportation.
State of Montana or the Granite County?
Yes.
No, Department of Transportation.
No.
Department of Transportation, State Department of Transportation. Okay, so that, you're saying that they're the ones that plow, plow that road going up there?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
It's not the county?
No. Okay, so further discussion on the motion? Hearing none, and we're talking about, once again, the Cooperative Forest Road Agreement motion by Commissioner Adler, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Okay, second, or, yeah, the second part of this is, uh, Schedule A to cooperate, uh, with Forest Service Agreement and Decision, cooperate forest, cooperate Forest Service Agreement, I'm sorry, uh, comments?
No, I understand now, that this ties in with modifications, so these.
Right. The, the proposal is to modify Schedule A, to add those extra three roads that you mentioned, so that in the modification of the project agreement, it's legitimate to work, they have to be part of Schedule A in order to be worked on in the project agreement, so they add it to her.
Well, I'm gonna, should I make a motion now, or?
You may.
I'm gonna make a motion that we table this to the future, uh, in maybe June, or whenever I can get, because I still don't understand the total modification, and I have a lot of questions on how the county is going to receive this.
Okay, like, most of those should be articulated in the agreement.
Here the modification, and so I'm looking at changes in the modification, and what we told, this was like two hundred thousand dollars.
So something like that. Add it into whatever was part of it from last year.
Two oh five, right there, that we're talking about?
Two hundred and five thousand?
Yeah.
Yep.
That, that, that's what I understood it to be, but then, in the proposed modification, it says, uh, delete and replace with the following. Use Forest Service for actual costs incurred not to exceed five hundred and fifteen thousand. Then it goes on to section four, delete not to exceed two hundred and eighty-one thousand, and replace with five hundred and fifteen thousand.
So that was two years, that's the five fifteen was the two years we added the two oh seven to get the five fifteen.
Somehow it's been expended.
Exactly.
Agreement for the, it's adding on to last year.
Yes, exactly.
Just a better explain, where the money came from and how it's been expended.
Very expensive.
Right.
Yeah.
Okay, another thing is, it says, replace Paul Paul, put a bill slot in, and I don't think we have.
Well, I think that's just for signature purposes, he can't, as a county, uh, department head, he can't sign a contract, only the commission can.
Remember last week I asked about that, why you didn't call me, make it on there?
He can't legally, he can't sign, he can't say.
He didn't last year.
No, he didn't last year, he signed.
Would you want all three names in there, is that what, kind of, that's what you said last week?
Yeah, I don't wanna, I wanna, I wanna know every, every time somebody called up and said we wanna change something, I won't know.
You will, but I, you can add, I don't care, it's just to the chairman, but I would happy to have signature page for all of these, that's it. What is expressing is Paul can't sign contracts, only we can. If you put, I wanna put all three of us in, you bet you can.
Really, only the chair, unless, or the acting chair.
Yeah.
We have to make a motion on it when we do it, so.
You gotta, you gotta.
I can't just say, uh.
Without us.
Yeah. If we come through the normal course of business, we'd make a motion, we'd get an opportunity to.
Right.
Yeah, yeah.
Could we put three names in?
Sure. All right, so, um, so where your motion is.
Can we leave?
Again? I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Did, did you wanna modify what you had there, or did you wanna make a motion to table it?
I don't.
Do you wanna go?
I brought it in, sorry, what you, oh, I brought it in, I thought you stopped.
We just, I just wanna clarify a motion so we can get a second or not and move ahead. Do you wanna make a motion to table it, or do you wanna, you had made a motion?
Well, I wanna make a motion to table it until we get changes made in, in the documentation, and we figure out how we're gonna manage this, because we're really not set up, I don't think the county is, for doing this kind of job. And that isn't, uh, well, put the bidding, and, and how we're gonna do that, and for what time we're gonna do that, and whether we're gonna design, and, you know, you can't bid a road unless you know what the design is, so the guy comes in there and says, we gotta have something to give to these guys and say, okay, this is what it is, and are we gonna split it up?
So the bid could be, uh, a, just a hourly for their, for their equipment, that could be, or it could be for the projects, it could be either way.
And there is a Forest Service.
Well, normally, you come up, you come up in the, uh, uh, see, we do it by hour.
I think that's what they did last year, Chuck, when they did it, they did, there were so many hours on certain things.
Yeah, no, and I don't think that's right, I mean, I think it's public money, and you should have a project and have the bids, and so that we can get the low bid, and we can save some money. If you do it by hour, yeah, nothing will work, that's like the fires, I mean.
Well, it's good, like, that's what we did.
Well, this is another big project, you know, it says, I read that map, right, is that, uh, on Meadow Creek, is it, twelve and a half miles?
Must be something like that, yeah, that was a little more, yeah.
It's a big project. And, and it know, you know, so we're, we're gonna put the full, we're, we're designing, you know, and then we have to do, you got an inspector who's out there, and, and get a, yeah, we need to call her, here, it's not in the design yet, and you, you know, you do the whole, everything documented, you know?
I think that guy.
Well, it will be, the, the Forest Service engineer does exactly that, at every corporate location, and after it's put in, he inspects it.
Wade Jerome, we're hiring Wade Jerome back, detailed back, Wade Jerome, an engineer of the, and it's coming back, and so he'll put the package together, that'll be a road maintenance package.
And then we get to see it, and it's, it's all, you know, what we're, what we're talking about today is our intentions to do this.
Well, then let's wait until we see the road back, that's all I'm saying, right?
Well, they're not gonna do it, if, if they're not gonna do it unless they know that we're, it's gonna go through, um, our, plus the county's gonna get involved, so they're not gonna do it.
So how, how are we gonna, how are we gonna bid it up?
Well, and so that's up to us, and, uh, the county attorney has weighed in and said that he'd like to see some changes from last time, that we certainly would follow, the advertisement better, get it in the paper, um, you know, you'll, you'll kinda eat this all in one mouthful, and kinda feel see a little bit of it, and if you wanna make modifications, if you don't think we're doing, for example, long enough advertisement or in the right place, you know, you'll get an opportunity to say, well, no, let's not let that until we, um, add, put it in the paper another week, or whatever you wanna do, okay? And we'll certainly.
Well, we gotta work that, that's one we gotta work out.
Well, we, we, we have it, but we've.
Before we sign to do it, we should have, know what the whole package is, I mean, we.
Well, we know what the whole package is, it's right there, and we've done it before. Okay, so, so your motion is to table the, it's, right?
And, and another thing, that I never got an answer from the letter that I wrote, the Senator Ross, as of yet. Don't know why.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Okay, so there's a motion on the floor, is there a second? Nobody understand the motion? The motion is to table, is there a second? Hearing none, the motion fails, so, uh, is there a motion? Hearing none, the motion fails, so, uh, is there a motion or do you need to have more questions before you wanna make a motion on Schedule A Cooperative Forest Road Agreement today?
I wanna know what authority this is being done.
What authority? The master agreement?
Yeah, what authority? Wait, what, how can a county directly deal with a federal government?
Under Schedule A, we have the, um, the agreement, the way those work is we transfer funds or, uh, the properties between county governments and federal governments.
So under state statute, you guys have a contract with any entity? True. In a, in a public meeting?
So, so on this one, really we're just moving ahead, but we're not agreeing to do some of the road work until we see that. But this here is just to move ahead and so like others that we can actually have a step over there.
We would really enjoy to obligate the funds.
Yeah.
There, we could lose them, which is an opportunity.
Yeah, we wish to that, come, we're, we're gonna do, add agreement on, on the, on the bidding and designs and.
And we'll do that, Chuck. The, the outline is there and we'll do that. They need to have a, we need to know the Forest Service, our partner, what our intentions are. We absolutely need to tell them what our intentions are. And that's, that's where we're at. We postponed it one week, we heard from the Forest Service, we made no decision. Good decision, that was yours, good deal. Now it's, you know, do it or not. I disagree, so, I'll, I'll, I'll make a motion.
I'll make a motion that we move ahead with this, at least get it moving so then they can come back in and show us what's the road package and what's gonna happen, where, here and there, otherwise if we rate again, we're, we're gonna lose out.
So, so we're kinda taking this one a step at a time, so your motion is to Schedule A?
So they, they're gonna get paid by the hour or they're gonna get paid by, or they can bid on the job, but they can save the people's money? Or they can just say, well, this can take longer than we thought?
No, that's where we take bids, it'll be by the hour, there'll be a high deadline and.
So much money per job.
Yeah, well, certainly.
That's not the way it's done.
That's the way we've been doing it, so. We've, we've been pretty successful doing it.
It's the people's money. Shouldn't, shouldn't they ever say it?
Absolutely, and they do. Through, I was elected, he was elected, you were elected to make those decisions. Alright, so, uh, there's a, there's a, Commissioner Adler's had a motion to move ahead with Schedule A Cooperative Forest Road Agreement. Is there a second? I will second it. Further discussion on the motion, this is the second part of the three things we're talking about.
When would you have that come back in? sooner to bed or so every time you know it's.
We, uh, for the, to get an idea with road logging and he's just gonna start June third, I, I think, I think he starts June third and so he would hopefully have that done within a few weeks, the road logging.
We gotta get the forest road. Okay, so is there any public?
Hold on, there's discussion, I think we're totally off page. I'll say it again.
Okay.
We don't know what we're doing, we didn't, we can't even go out there and look at it.
I think the agreement that worked last year was really a, a good, it went last year, it worked really well, if that helps you, I know you.
Well, to you it did.
Little stuff.
To me it did.
Oh, you just liked it or what? I thought they did a very nice job.
No, the way it was done, by hour?
That, instead of going through a formal contract and.
So are we gonna stop at two hundred and five thousand dollars or are we gonna five hundred and fifteen?
No, that's, that's what's, yeah, half of it.
So it was, it was a formal contract with subcontractor that wasn't hourly, that was monitored by the, monitored by the Paul Alt Commission.
And Wade.
And Wade.
So we have an agreement between Wade Road, it ended up at the end.
It doesn't mean we have to do it that way, this, this time.
Okay, so is there any public comment on the second motion by Commissioner Adler to move ahead with Schedule A Cooperative Forest Road Agreement? Elena?
Yeah, so like.
Point of clarification here.
Well, Elena, I, I recognize you, go ahead, I'll give you a chance.
Okay, he couldn't see. Anyway, uh, for the record, Elena Gagliano, um, just clarification of what you're doing. My comment is it almost sounds like a Pelosi motion. Sign it and then we'll discuss the details. Uh, going back to changing Paul Alt, um, cause he doesn't.
Let's not go back, let's not go back.
I thought that was the one we were talking about.
Just dial this up. No, I wanna hear what she says. Listen.
I thought that was the one.
But it's gonna, it's gonna be on this motion, so please.
Well, is, if it's on the motion, then I, I would like explanation of it, that you're taking him off, putting you on because he can't sign a contract. So who signed it when his name was on it?
I saw.
You signed it.
It stated that he was the contact person.
Okay, the contact person.
Forest Service wants the, the chair to be the contact person.
Yeah.
So that you're gonna be the contact person, cause you're the chair, as a board.
But, but we modified that now because all three of us will be on as the contact person.
Well, that's what, yeah, that's what I'm talking about.
Yeah, that's fine.
So that the three of you as a board, the whole, this goes on the agenda, you have a discussion, you pass a motion, and then you sign the contract or whatever. But it's gonna be all three of you that are gonna be part of this agenda meeting. Is that the way it's been done or is that something new?
Yeah, that's what it's been.
It's been that.
And that's what we'll continue. Uh, it's just the chair, once we had our discussion, the chair would sign it, but the three of us are gonna sign it now, that's fine.
Well, that's the thing, once you have a discussion, cause I've seen there was no discussion, nothing on the agenda, and then all of a sudden, something was signed, like it was.
Okay, let's stick to the motion, so.
So therefore, it's going to be, if there's anything, they'll get in touch with you, you'll put it on the agenda, as a whole, you have a discussion, and then, um, you make a motion in the front of the public and then if, then it's gonna be sign the contract or you put it in the newspaper. Is that the way it is?
Yeah, okay, so our intention is to go ahead and move ahead with this contract, there is contract with details. But further details, all three of us are gonna be contact people, uh, we'll consult with Paul, he will give us a report every week on what they're doing. And, uh, if there's any changes or modifications or how we advertise and all that stuff, the, the commission as a whole will discuss that.
And this is the first time you're discussing this?
No.
When did you discuss it?
We had a full meeting last week with the Forest Service, uh, and then we discussed it like three or four weeks ago initially.
Initially.
And we did it last year, it completely, you know, we had discussion, we signed the contracts, we set up the, you know, uh, let the bids and, uh, and we did the work and then we had a final.
So last week you had a full discussion on this. April second, you had a full discussion?
Yes.
Well, here's again my point. The public doesn't know what was discussed because we don't have the minutes to follow.
Okay.
So it makes it very awkward, okay?
Okay, so further discussion on the motion. Uh, Dick?
Uh, in terms of, of that exhibit B, you're talking about the State Department of Transportation. Uh, are you referring to the Forest Service or where, where does the State Department of Transportation come in later?
They don't, in this discussion, you asked about a section of roadway that they are responsible for, for maintaining, that's why we answered you the way we.
So the road that's marked on exhibit B from the dam all the way up, uh, around, uh, that and then back down into the, to the lake road. Uh, that is designated now as a Forest Service road or is it a county road?
If I understand the map that you're talking about.
The one you're pointing out there is a Forest Service road that, that the county is maintaining under their annual maintenance plan.
Okay, so, so you're responsible for plowing all of that road?
The Forest Service owns the road, but under this agreement, the county has been doing this whole part.
Okay, and that means that they're gonna plow all the way around or?
Just the section you're looking at, that's in kind of that dark blue color.
When you say the section I'm looking at, the, the road goes up here and it looks to me that it comes all the way around, uh, at the very top of the hill, goes back into the other side.
Okay, so, I'm not sure you're looking, you're looking, so, Dick, this is the highway going up that's all maintained by, this is the lake, okay? And the dam and it goes all the way up, that's DOT, we're not gonna do that. This road here is a Forest Service road on the bottom side of the lake, okay? The west side of the lake, this is the dam. So this chunk right here is owned by the Forest Service and is maintained by the county under this agreement. Does that make sense?
No, the, the dam.
The dam's right here. That's not, that's, see, this is Georgetown Lake, the dam's at the bottom, okay? And, and, and.
Are we talking about the hydroelectric dam or Flint Creek Dam?
No, Georgetown Lake, Georgetown Lake.
That's right here, isn't it?
So, okay, I'm sorry, I got it backwards. Uh, yeah, so, let's just turn, let's just, let's just turn it around this way, okay? This is Forest Service, this is state, state highway, we're not even doing that. This is Forest Service. We do maintain that under this agreement even though we don't own it. Does that make sense?
Okay, that's part of the cooperative.
Yes, sir.
Is that they own the land, they're cooperating with you to plow and maintain that.
You got it.
Thank you. And, and we're also talking about the, uh, you were looking at a major expansion down, down by the lake there. Uh, this also includes a cooperative agreement in order to, for the county to maintain that, uh, part of the land that you have where you're looking at expanding the road and, uh, making some major improvements down there.
What are you talking about the flat?
Well, I think you must be talking about the flat, um, totally, totally different discussion. Um, there is a grant application.
I think it's all part of the same thing.
No.
Yes, it is.
Okay, well, yeah, I disagree. We have a, we have a grant.
We're talking some significant dollars here, you know, in terms of who's gonna maintain that road down there, so this is all part of that discussion. Has, has the county designated, planning board designated this road as a Forest Service road or a county road?
It's always been a Forest Service road, the county.
They had a meeting last Thursday where they were designating the roads, was that included on, in, in the meeting as a designated road by the planning board?
I'm not aware that they're designated, the planning board wouldn't designate.
They can't designate.
Designated county road, I'm sorry.
They can't do that. That's either by petition, it's always been a Forest Service road.
They're required to do it, okay? Uh, so.
Alright.
I don't know why you can say they can't, they can't do that, that's exactly what they're doing. When you look at the law on this thing, it says in there that the, uh, the county is responsible for, uh, uh, repairing, plowing, maintenance of the, uh, county roads and bridges. So if it's not a county road, you have to have some kind of an intercooperative agreement on that.
Exactly, that's what this is. That's what this is, you're right.
And so I'm trying to determine where that intercooperative agreement goes. This is what I understand you, you're saying that this blue portion is down here, it is owned by the Forest Service, not the State Department of Transportation, the Forest Service, per se.
Yes.
Okay.
And this one is the transportation on the other side of the lake, so that's where we're confused, but yeah.
Okay, well, uh, I'm, I'm still talking about the designated road. What is it, what road are you talking about as far as a cooperative agreement? And so, uh, that's why I'm trying to get this to say. So if we're talking about this cooperative agreement and the county is gonna maintain and plow the roads, uh, initially I was talking about whether or not the county was gonna plow all the way around that hill and, uh, whether, whether it was just gonna continue to plow right up to the top and, and deposit all the snow up there.
I, I guess I have a tracking to clean out. So Dick, you gotta remember, this is Forest Service road in Grant County that we have a cooperative agreement to, to maintain. This on the other side of the lake, if you went all the way around, you're going into another county, that's DOT.
I'm not talking about that, I'm talking about the road.
Well, you said around the lake, so I'm just telling you there's another county involved here as well, okay? There's another county. So right to the top of the road.
I, I own the property up there and so I wanna know what, what you're talking about. You're not talking about another county.
Oh, okay, so we don't go up the hill?
No. You do go up the hill, but you stop at the very top.
Right, right.
Does the cooperative agreement mean that rather than stopping at the very top, you go all the way around to the other side?
No.
Why not?
Not now, because that's just not something, it, it's up to the Forest Service and something made them brought to us. Yeah.
If they brought it to you, consider it.
Sure, sure.
So, one clarification, after you, uh, if you approved the modification agreement today, the two else saying issues would be the, the plan, which they would come, come back in and talk to about the commission on the specific plan, that'd be on the agenda in a public meeting after you approve the voting. And then, uh, the other issue would be the bidding and that would be also would be discussed.
Probably a time war.
Yeah.
Well, then shouldn't you change the map here to, to designate that it's not, that part of the road is not gonna be maintained as part of this cooperative agreement?
That's within that road maintenance plan.
Pardon?
It's, it's specified within the road maintenance plan.
It's being maintained.
Shouldn't you change the map here to designate whatever, does it say in the road maintenance plan that you're gonna stop at the very top?
The map should show all the roads.
It's, the map's accurate, I mean, that's what we're doing right now.
It's the language in the road maintenance plan that they're effective.
Further public comment?
Shouldn't the map be consistent with the road?
Yeah, it is.
It is not.
Okay, so further public comment? Hang on a second, Commissioner, any other, okay, uh, Mr. Hinkle?
Yeah, I just wanna stay on a strong, a close motion, and another thing, I was accused of two things last week, if it falls. And I'd like it on the record.
Well, let's just stay on the subject where we can take it back.
Well, it's kind of one of the same.
Oh, okay. You look at, so I don't know if Mike understands what you mean.
No, somebody was gonna apologize. I guess it's not.
Which is.
Well, listen.
Caching a little loud.
I'm gonna go part of order here, we're, we got a motion on the floor to Schedule A Cooperative Road Agreement, there's a motion and a second. Uh, A, last call for public comment on the motion, on the motion. Hearing none, all in favor of the motion, say aye. Aye, motion carries.
No.
Nay, Commissioner Hinkle is a nay. Okay, the third thing in our discussion today, go ahead, Scott.
Uh, what Chuck's talking about is last week I made an accusation at him for a Forest Service deal that got out of hand and he wants me to, uh.
You said you would, I didn't even ask. Okay, what are you, what are you for?
Can I finish?
What are you for?
And he wants an apology, a public apology for me, cause I, I apologize. That, you guys are good with it? You good with it? Everybody good with it?
Okay. So, the third, uh, the part of the discussion today on, with Forest Service is the modification of the two thousand and eighteen road project agreement with the Forest Service. This is the discussion you guys just had, do you want anything to add to that?
No, just to clarify, what we've been talking about though is the project agreement just sets the stage for, basically for the county to manage that approximately two hundred thousand dollars.
Right.
And then it's kind of laid out as to what the county and the Forest Service do, to put the plans and specs together and agree on how the work's gonna happen.
And you would agree that we're gonna give plenty of opportunity for Commissioner Hinkle or all of us and the public to, uh, exactly how, what we did last. First, we had public comment and we took this thing apart piece by piece of exactly how that's gets done, right? Okay, the engineering, the oversight, how it's paid, uh, how it's going, the plan, okay, and maybe the talk.
Right, we're in there every week, dude.
Right, we're here every week, yeah.
Yeah, I just encourage you to have it on the agenda every week and.
Well, that's, if you look back on the agenda, it's.
So before there's a motion, I hope that everybody understands that, uh, we could have done better the way it was bid. Got that, very loud and clear, and we're gonna do better this time and we'll, we'll get it out more publicly and, uh, hopefully we have some good local. Got that, pretty loud and clear, and we're gonna do better this time, and we'll get it out more publicly, and, uh, hopefully, we have some good local businesses, uh, you know, profit from this thing else, and that's hopefully, okay, uh, so, I'll entertain a motion on modification of, uh, twenty eighteen road project agreement with Forest Service.
I'm at the motion.
Don't we move ahead?
Yep.
So, Mike, are you tracking?
Yep.
So, is there a second to the motion? Okay, I'll second the motion, discussion on the motion, uh, Commissioner, can you further discussion? Okay, Commissioner Adams, is there any public discussion on the third part of the motion, uh, the third part of the discussion, the motion on the floor? Public discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye?
No.
Commissioner Hinkle is a nay, motion carries, thank you guys, so, are we gonna be getting to work with you guys on this field? Yeah, and you live where?
I live in Dallas, we're only here if it's Cameron's dad had surgery a day or yesterday.
Are you gonna be having a talk with someone, so?
I'm the engineer for the Forest, so.
I'm the staff officer over engineering.
So, you're gonna send this good engineer, get this done, right?
I think we got a good one.
Yeah, the same guy last year, he was great.
Be here all summer.
Yep.
Yeah. Well, you know, we appreciate it, um, we're a new commissioner, I think it's important that he answers questions as far as, and, and, and kinda track through this thing, okay?
Yeah, I think that the process worked fairly well last year, that there's some options there that need changing, but.
Sure.
I would really appreciate it if we could.
That's one of those deals you, you learn, don't you?
Yeah.
Doing one project, then maybe doing the next one better.
Different.
Sure, we appreciate you guys coming today, thank you very much.
So, we wanted to leave with the signing.
So, Mike, have you got a copy?
Cameron brought that in last year, last week.
You just add them, okay?
No, one signature.
I think I'll sign it.
Just all signs?
There are two, or two of each, and a few.
Pass that around to the people if they want it. Pass that around to the people if they wanna see it, don't mention it. Did you read my note?